There we go. All right, we're back in regular session here. Item four on the agenda is consideration for the Sampson's Agreement. Is there a motion on that item?
So moved.
Got a first by Becca?
Second.
Got a second by Dave. No real discussion on a contract like this, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Jason, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
I'm yes. Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Item four passes unanimously. Item five is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I've got a question.
I never saw any background on that. What? What are we talking about?
The Sampson's Corner and the parking lot next to the bowling alley. Continuing to lease them during the motorcycle rally and possibly more. Yep, yep. Yep. All right. All right, please stand and join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess as a note for the approval of the agenda prior to the executive session, there was a change on reports. Item one and item two are going to be interchanged. So that was an amended agenda for the approval when that was done. Item six is informational reports. The planning commission meeting minutes are included within that packet. Um, I think that was it for anything there. No add-on on B. Item seven is announcements and praise. Got quite a bit here, but I want to take a moment to pray if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, we appreciate the ability to come before you in prayer. Appreciate the ability to meet as a community and discuss our future. We, uh, hope during this Christmas time, we could come to you and join and enjoy this joyous season. Uh, the birth of Christ and God coming to the earth and eventually being sacrificed for our sins is the best gift that could be given, and we just pray that that can be remembered during Christmas. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I have a list here. I'll start at the top. Because of City Hall and the city being closed on Thursday and Friday, we have garbage for Thursday being picked up on Wednesday. Friday's garbage being picked up on Monday for the next two weeks. As I stated, there's a City Hall be closed. City Hall is open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday this week and the same next week. Uh, Christmas tree drop-off is open and operating if you so desire. Um, Sturgis Optimist Club, there's money raised during the employee Christmas party, $632, which is given for direct toys for the citizens of Sturgis and, uh, for the season. Anybody have anything to add that I missed? I think, Daniel, there's a couple other things that... No, I get them all? I couldn't hear one of them, so I wasn't sure about that. Counsel have anything to add? Item eight is counselor's update. Mr. Jordan is taking that privilege tonight, so I'll turn it over to you. Yep.
Hey, just a disclaimer, if I fall off my chair, I was on the way driving down here today, and a black cat right in front of me. Makes me nervous.
Right on Sherman Street.
Hey, I've only been, you know, I'm relatively new, like a lot of us are here on the city council. Uh, I think it's been about seven months, and I'd like to tell you that it's been a really good experience. Um, that, you know, the people I've got to work with. You know, I kind of started off with, you know, the people out in the community, particularly Ward Three that I represent. Uh, you know, I've had opportunities for phone calls, emails, you know, coffee down at the coffee shop. Uh, people just wanting to talk, uh, on the sidewalk, and I appreciate that. It's important for me to have a, to know, and I think that's for all of us, to have an idea where people are coming from and what they, what their thoughts are, what their visions are, and those type of things. And I would tell you, that's been probably the one, the best experience over the last seven months is having those kind of conversations. And I look forward to having more of those conversations as, uh, as we go down the road over the next couple of years. The other thing is the city staff. I've had a, you know, over the last seven months, you know, I went to the Christmas parties here the last couple of days. And I would tell you, Chief of the Police Department, I would, the team dynamic and camaraderie and love for each other within that group of people was just impressive. You know, I've always worked on teams, you know, from being in sports or being in the military, and it's pretty easy to recognize, you know, a great team. And, uh, and just kind of watching through the Christmas parties and just working with the city staff over the last seven months. You know, I've been really impressed with how much you work to really try to take care of, uh, the people in this, uh, in our community. You do a lot of extra overtime things, probably not getting paid for it, but just doing extra things to take care of things that need to get accomplished. And, uh, I really kind of appreciate that. I've always, you know, I've lived here most of my life, but I've never really had an opportunity to get involved with the city staff that much. And to be able to see that and to see how much you care about us and, and just working hard and having a great team, uh, I really appreciate that. And then with my fellow counselors, you know, my teammates up here, uh, you know, working with people that are really dedicated to our community. Uh, I mean, they're all, I mean, they all have jobs, you know, they're raising families. Uh, they're involved in other activities, but they had to take the time here because they really want to make a difference. When I've talked with all, uh, all of them individually, um, you know, everybody down to a T, I mean, really here for the right reasons. And it's, it's great to be a part of a team and work with other people that are like-minded and want to, what, do what's best for Sturgis. So now, as we go forward in 22, uh, and 23, I guess I'll talk a little more aspirational. Not so much about projects or specifics, anything. Uh, but just kind of looking, you know, into the future. And the reason I got into city council and the reason I, you know, I decided to throw my name in the hat to be able to have this opportunity is that I really wanted to make a difference and work with everybody here and everybody out in our community to make us more a united community. Uh, you know, every community I probably has the things that divide them and just like we do. You know, I could have it in my own household. I'm, I'm okay with the rally. I don't mind. It's one of those extra things in two weeks. I kind of like doing something different. I would tell you, my wife doesn't really much like the inconvenience. And so I've, I've lived out of my own household. But what I really like to be able to do is, in all of us, is to be able to just continue to work together and just be, you know, more united. Uh, you never get completely. I mean, anytime you have, uh, you know, this kind of government democracy, we all have voices. We're not always going to agree, but I do think if we work together and continue to, uh, listen uh, to one another and have an understanding where each other's coming from, that we could probably find some, a middle way that's going to benefit our community. Uh, some of the things that the city's been doing that I've been excited about, uh, because again, as I was getting ready to come on the council, those are things that really matter to me is how can we become a more united community? As soon as I get on the city council and almost in the Kevin Forster and then talking to the mayor, and they're talking about this new information system to be able to help with transparency. Uh, trust and transparency are two things that we have to always continue to improve on. It doesn't matter what team you're on or what community you, you live in. And, uh, you know, I really put a lot of credit for Kevin really kind of pushing us on this new information system to be able to have more transparency, not only within the city and the council, but particularly with the community to have a none. So you, people are more informed on what's going on, and you can find information and have that information. So thanks for Kevin kind of taking the lead on that and everybody else for, for jumping on board. It sounds like we're going to be implementing that here, uh, relatively soon. Also, from the committees, you know, again, when it comes down to shaping what the vision of our community is, it's important that, you know, again, we, everybody has a voice. And, but having a voice, you had to be able to listen to those voices too. And talking with Mr., uh, uh, Mayor, I was talking about revamping the committees a little bit, you know, trying to make them, you know, right in here where people can be a part of it, even the, in, in the community. So I appreciate that, Mark, in terms of trying to be able to create, you know, an opportunity for people in our community to have a voice on what the vision and the future of our, of our, of our little city is. You know, I think probably the most important thing is for us to continue to kind of find a common ground and compromise. You know, I've had opportunities over the last couple of years to talk with some civic organizations. And one of the things I've talked about, and I'm a historian, so, uh, yeah, I'm sorry to bring in a little history to this piece of it. But if you were to take today's political environment and overlay that over the Constitutional Convention in 1787, we wouldn't have a constitution. Everybody, every representative from all the colonies, when they came to that event, not one person got what they wanted. They had to find a middle way, they had to compromise to be able to get everybody on board, as many people on board to make it uh, available. And I think that's true today. Uh, I think we have to continue to, again, reach out, listen, uh, and really try to appreciate where other people are coming from. And as we kind of chart the future of our community is to try to, you know, synergize and bring that all together from all those voices. And again, but we all have to, again, listen and be able to compromise. As, uh, we go forward, again, I'd love to hear, and I'm, you know, I'm probably speaking on behalf of all the, uh, people at this table, is to be able to hear what people's thoughts are. It doesn't matter what the issue is, is to have an understanding of what you think and what you think the vision of our community is. I have a vision, but it can be shaped by when I talk to more people. You know, I see the community as obviously number one, we want to continue to be able to provide a, an environment where you can raise your family. That's probably the number one priority. But we have to, to be able to do that, we have to be able to, you have to have services. You have to have a place, you know, retail, restaurants, uh, recreation, parks, uh, the whole nine yards to be able to make that work. And as, so when I look at what we are in the future, we've, we've always been a rally town. We've become more of an events town. I'd like to see us become more of a recreational town too, in terms of leisure. Uh, but that's just my thoughts. Again, I can, my, I represent this community and particularly people in Ward Three. And so I'm always interested in finding, in understanding where you're coming from to help shape what that vision looks like. And working with my teammates up here, and again, I believe everybody here at this table feels the same way, is having an understanding of where you think where the vision of our community is. And then as we execute actions and talk about things, we can always evaluate that against what that vision is. So again, uh, I appreciate it, and, uh, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counselor. I think we need to hit our button over here. I don't know if we're live. Yeah, that one, this one doesn't turn on. It is on? Yeah. I just wanted to make sure.
That black cat.
Yeah. Item nine is city manager's report, so turn it over to you, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of items. First of all, our sales tax update for the month of October. Uh, month over month, October and the general sales tax, so that is the 2% that is paid everywhere uh, where you shop, um, or go out to eat or anything else. Um, October of '21 compared to October of '20, we are up 14.2%. So year over year, for the first 10 months of the year, we are up 13.5%. Then the triple B, that's the tourism tax. That's at hotels and restaurants and, um, purchasing alcohol for the month of October of '21 compared to the month of October in '20. Uh, we are up 32.4%. For the year, tourism has been up 27.2%. So it's been a fantastic year so far. Um, the next item is our 2021 Employee and Volunteers of the Year. Is, uh, Karina here as our employee of the year? Yeah, Karina. On forward. I think we'd like to get a picture, uh, with you and the mayor up here.
Well, everybody.
Okay, and Travis as well for the, okay. And Travis as our volunteer of the year as well for all of his additional work and raising funds for various charities and always, uh, stepping in for the police department.
Well, I think you should be up there, Daniel. For sure. I mean.
And for everyone to know, uh, both Travis and Karina, uh, were nominated by several individuals. So they were, uh, noted by several individuals. And I think what's important to note also for, uh, Karina is that she's new to our community and has done a fantastic job in her first year and a half that she's been here. Um, has really done a great job working with all sorts of different contractors and residents and, uh, making sure that they're able to get their, uh, permits in and, uh, projects done quickly and efficiently and also to code. So thank you, guys. Uh, the last item is, uh, payroll changes. We just have a volunteer who's going to be working, um, at the animal shelter. Mallory will be on there, and so that just, uh, covers us for insurance purposes. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Item 10 is consent calendar. We have one through seven tonight for items. Does counsel wish to remove any of those items and discuss them individually? How about anybody in the public? Any items on the consent calendar need to be removed and discussed individually?
Move to approve?
Got a first by Jason to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a second by Becca. Any last discussion, public or council? We've got minutes, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Mike, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm yes. Becca?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Consent calendar passes. Brings us to the claims. Any discussion or questions from council on the claims? Or public questions? Is there a motion on the claims?
So moved.
Got a first by Becca?
Second.
Second by Dean. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? Please don't unanimous for the record, Fay, please. Item 12 with the change of the agenda. First up is finance officer submitting the cannabis applications to the council. Um, I think we'll be best served if Mr. Marshall gives us the procedure plan here as we move forward with the drawing and complete this item.
Members of the council, uh, the city has received 18 dispensary applications for six locations. The deadline for submitting those applications was November 23rd. The finance officer has opened the applications to determine if they were complete. Upon review, four applications were identified as not being complete. They were not complete because, uh, payment was not provided for the licensing fee and because they required variances to, uh, complete the application process. In considering the variance issue, it was decided that because the variance was outside the scope of the individual to affect that on their own, that it would be deemed not substantially complete. The remaining 14 applications were substantially complete, but all of those 14 applications had issues. And by having issues, what I mean is that they did not meet the ordinance for the sprinkler system, for, uh, other building matters, for, uh, the presence of a safe. They didn't have alarm systems. Those are items which the council can require the applicants to provide and give them a conditional applica, conditional license saying you will have a dispensary license if you see to it that your building is sprinkled, that you have the appropriate alarm system and a safe approved by the chief of police. So at this point, the council can decide, or they, council may decide as the applications are opened and considered, whether to issue a conditional license. Does the council have any questions at this point?
Procedurally, does, does that make sense to council? I, I think. I, I don't want to interrupt you, so I'll let you go ahead again, Mark. You're going to speak again.
That is a matter entirely up to the council. The procedure I recommend is that you conduct the lottery, assign a number, a lottery number to the applications, and then open all of the applications in order. Or consider them based on your PowerPoint, your Excel spreadsheet, I should say. Having considered all the applications, then you can choose to award a license to the first two selected, or should you deem them unacceptable to the succeeding applications?
And there's also a process with the state that must be undergone.
Yes. After your process, you have until January 19th to complete. That January 19th date was, uh, the time after 15 day, the meeting following 15 days after submission. So they were submitted as of the 23rd, the 15 days placed. The first date, you could consider them beyond the meeting on the 6th. So that's why they're before you today. And you would have 30 days to complete it, but the state has imposed a deadline. That deadline requires, uh, that if no action is taken by the city council, then they will be deemed denied for the state's consideration of the application. So while it may seem like a push, considering the applications tonight, tonight and awarding the licenses tonight allows you the discretion and the, to do your job in the way that you deem appropriate. Are there any questions before we draw the numbers?
Who is going to draw?
Lance said he would. He's hiding in the corner. And I think we can draw first, Mark, or can the discussion be beforehand if the, if the council thinks it makes sense to have a conditional license? I mean, that, that discussion is a valid one to have, and I think it needs to be had, and I don't think it matters either before or after. But in my opinion, I think before makes sense.
I think it makes a lot of sense to do it before, because if you do it before, you cannot be perceived as having that discussion based on who the applicant was that you were considering.
Does council have any input on the conditional license?
I, I'm all right with the conditional license.
I concur with, with Dave in that I, I believe a conditional license at this point would be, um, the route to go down, because when you look at the information that we've been given, there are several sections that say pending for some of these businesses, and I, I just believe that that is appropriate.
If I may, another reason why it may be appropriate to issue a conditional license is the cost associated with meeting the sprinkling requirement and some of the other building rehab requirements. And frankly, the council doesn't know what the state legislature may do with regard to medical marijuana, recreational marijuana. You're really caught in a hard spot because you're acting on incomplete information from the state. So to be fair to your applicants, it seems prudent not to require them to expend a considerable amount of money only to have the rug pulled out from under them by the legislature.
I, I have a question also. I guess it's really more about clarification. So we will draw in order all of the 14, um, applications that are substantially complete. In the event, because we, if we do go with the conditional license, if, say, one of them that receives a, a conditional license, just hypothetically, is not able to complete the, you know, fulfill the ordinance requirements, then we would just move on down to the next
You may award the license to the next applicant that was selected
Okay.
in the order of the lottery.
All right. I just wanted that to be clarified. Thank you.
So with that, if that was to occur, and obviously there's multiple entries in some, there'll still be 14 slots that obviously, if it ever does come to that, may slide down a long ways on the chart if it's the same corporation. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
And as you can see from your spreadsheet, uh, one applicant has submitted numerous applications, but for the same location. Only one license can be lo, uh, awarded to any one location. So for example, only if Puffy's comes up one and two, and you deem them appropriate, they can only be awarded one license because it's for the same location.
Well, that being said, does it make sense to deem it appropriate for a conditional license prior to the drawing completely, saying we believe that with the presented spreadsheet, that the 14 applic, the 14 license applications for the four locations are all deemed appropriate with a conditional use, just so that's out of the way, or a conditional license, so that that's out of the way prior to knowing what order they're in?
That certainly within
Does that make sense?
prerogative.
So you're talking about condensing down?
No, just that we're accepting the fact that nobody can achieve per ordinance the application requirements. All of them that will need some, would, would need a conditional license.
Okay, thank you.
But with that being said, all, all, every box has to be checked before they have open for sales.
Correct. Yep.
Does that make sense for council?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to draw 14 pieces of paper?
Oh, I have one more question. Okay, so, um, let's say we fast forward to next month, and I believe that it would be our permitting officer that is, who, who exactly will ensure that the ordinances have been fulfilled? And then does it need to come back to us to award a license or it will just automatically become?
Once, once they're met.
An active license? All right.
Become an active license once the council has received assurance that the conditions have been satisfied.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Guess now you get to draw, Lance. So the numbers are one through 18 per this Excel spreadsheet minus the ones deemed substantially incomplete. Fair statement? Puffy's LLC, it says.
Number 14.
Also Puffy's. Shake those.
Number one.
You should get a lottery ticket.
Yeah, we got all of them so far. Statistics.
Number nine.
Again.
Number 13.
They can only have the first 10.
Number 11. Number two.
That's different. Northern Hills Alternative Health.
Number 10. Number seven.
Is that from all? Is that all?
So different applicant wise, the order would be Puffy's LLC, NH Alternative Health, SNA Legal Root, Felsteve Prof Services, and Royal Flush. Did I get that right? So do we have to grant the license, or do we, as a motion, particular to each individual application, or is a overall motion with the conditional?
I think it would be prudent to grant the licenses individually rather than as a group.
Any further discussion on that? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, I guess, to, for the number one.
Right. With the conditional license, is that fair?
With the conditional license. I'll second.
We have a first and a second on the floor for a conditional license for Puffy's. Is there further discussion, public or council?
Do we have some guidelines for yes or no, or is it just a public vote? What's our, what's our criteria for selection? The spreadsheet?
Yep, yep, yep. And those conditions in the spreadsheet, yep. And the ordinance, yep.
Do we want to put a timeframe on that for conditional? So we have an idea of when, when they need to have it completed?
I, uh, my personal opinion, I think that the marketplace and the corporations will drive that timeline quicker than we would, and it'd probably depend on getting people to put the sprinklers and things in like that, so I, I, I don't think it's going to be something that'll hang out there, but I think council has that prerogative. There was a first and a second made.
I think we need to drop dead date. And the reason I say that is, there has to be some contingency or a drop dead date because coming up with pieces and parts to put a sprinkler system in, depending on the structure you're putting it in, may require water main upgrade to that area. There's all kinds of unknowns in this for them and for the city.
So Mike, are you saying that there's a drop dead from the actions being all complete, or the actions have been planned, they've got it coordinated, all the resources are available, now it's just act, have to execute the project to be able to complete those requirements?
Agreed, the latter. Every, all the pegs got to be in the right hole for them to be issued the license on time. Because, I mean, you know, there's, there could be all kinds of unforeseen infrastructure issues that could cause somebody to lose the license.
So going back to Becca's question then, who, who's the person that's going to tell us that all the pegs are in the hole, everything, they've met all the requirements for the conditional license?
Planning and zoning. Yep, planning and permitting, Dave and his crew, for sure. Yep. So we had a first and a second on the floor. Do we have a amendment to that with a timeframe? Who was the first and the second? Aaron and Becca? Whoa, whoa. No timeframe, so give me one second here. Ms. Walker, do you want to come up and state in the, we got to come up to the microphone? Okay?
Would you please come up for the microphone?
We had a portable one somewhere, but it's kind of spotty, too.
I'm Janine Walker, and I just have a question. If you issue these licenses and they have an option to buy a different building, does that negate the license, or if the building fits the codes, is that an opportunity for them to have a different building than the one that they had submitted in their license?
My, my answer, non-legal, so I'll lean on Mr. Marshall, would be the license is particular to this address, it would take a reissuing, a, a new license.
Okay, so if somebody that was issued this license decided to move it to a different address, then they just reconsidered a different address if it fit the code, correct? Is that an option or not?
No, it's not an option. Their license is for this location.
Okay, all right.
And their license applications cannot be supplemented
Okay.
per ordinance after the closing date of November twenty-third.
Even if the different, if the building fit the zoning ordinances?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And another thing, per ordinance, the license is good for one year, per the ordinance passed.
So it could be.
What is the, how, how would it be renewed?
They submit a renewal application to licensee.
Which means, what, what is the dual application?
A renewal.
Oh, a renewal, okay.
And I would imagine they would get the renewal if, if everything is as it should be in that business during that given year. Am I correct on that?
The, there is an intent behind the ordinances that the license applicant be considered again each year. The purpose of that is to prevent the license itself from gaining value and being something that would be a valuable item for sale or assignment. So each application must be renewed on its own merits each year, under the current, and under the ordinance as currently written.
Thanks, Mark. Any other discussion on granting this first license, council or public?
I, I have a comment. I guess that I'm not sure that I would support a hard, um, drop dead date for, um, the conditions to be met, just in that, given the, um, supply chain issues or things that are happening out in the world as far as construction, I mean, I just, I, I don't want to have to put a date on, on them, and then something outside of their control occurs, and it's pushed back. So that, I don't think I can.
I don't think Dave was looking at the actual completion of those projects, is, if it's, if they've done everything reasonable based on planning and zoning is looked at in terms of the coordination, and granted, you're right, just like when I did our kitchen remodel, it was supposed to be done in four weeks, ended up being three, four months, and that'd be something out, out of their control, but as long as they've in, have met the, have planned or had the resources to be able to meet the requirements, I think, then I think they're good. It may be extended because of the issues that you just brought up.
So the motion on the floor does not have any date made in the motion, so there would have to be an amended motion. I also want to make sure the discussion is clear that basically we're putting that decision on meeting those conditional requirements is in the hands of planning and permitting department. Council's plan is within those lines.
Well, I think it makes the most sense because that's, you know, their AO
Right.
For other, for other zoning and, and ordinance enforcement.
So the council's going to look at this as a income-producing license, very similar to our liquor, liquor and beverage licenses. There's a reapplication fee every year. We hope to gain income from the sales tax generated, so if it doesn't go in, if it doesn't go to work for a year, what's that mean to us?
Well, I think, my understanding is we, we are waiting to hear from the state legislature as far as what, if any, sales tax will be coming back to the city. That is an unknown, as far as I understand it, correct? Yes. So we won't know until March what the state legislature has decided.
So any last discussion, public or council, on the motion at hand to grant the first license conditionally to Puffy's with no drop dead date? No discussion being heard. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no?
No.
That motion carries, it'd be seven, six to one. Second item included in this action would be granting a conditional license to NH Alternative Health as the second location granted in the lottery. Is there discussion or emotion on that action?
I would move to approve with the same stipulations that we talked about, about everything.
First by Dave.
Second.
Second by Becca. Any last discussion, public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no?
No.
That motion carries. I think the rest of the applications, I mean, that, there wouldn't be a license granted unless we had to take further action because of the previous two, so I think that completes that, if you feel comfortable with that, Mr. Marshall.
Yes, I do.
Yep. All right. Item two is report from the Lakeside Adventure Park Consultants. I guess in coordination with this, the plan is the first meeting, do I remember this right, Fay? The first meeting in January is going to be held, January tenth. It's, it's not a regular meeting, it's, it's a special meeting, held with, yeah, held at the Sturgis Community Center Theater with the aquatics committee for
What time is that?
I think we're shooting for six, but I don't know if that time is set yet, but Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, thank you. More reading.
Right. All right, well, thank you.
Wow.
Mike, I just wanted to Thanks, sir. We're missing two, actually, so we'll make sure they get in the correct spot. Thanks.
Hi, Ron. Hi. How are you? Okay. Okay, we got it. Thank you. We'll be here in just a second. I'm going to turn off the speaker. Just a second. Okay? Thank you, sir. Got a bit of stuff here.
Hi. Okay, sorry about that. We'll put you on the speaker as well, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
We're ready?
Are you ready?
Okay. Hi, I'm Gene Fennel, and with me is Matt Friedell of Tall, Tall Grass Landscape Architecture. Try to say that four times fast. And joining us remotely, pardon? Better? Okay. Um, remotely is Ron Romans. He's with CRS, Commercial Recreation Specialist.
Remotely is Ron Romans.
Got to love that.
Ron, you need to turn off, or turn the mute on your Facebook livestream.
Thank you. So, we're going to present information in the following order. First of all, we have an intro. Um, and then, number two, we have concerns and responses. Uh, number three will be a business model of sorts, and then we'll go through the concepts, and then the costs of those concepts. So Matt's going to take it away here. Well, I guess I'll start. First of all, the concerns, um, how we started, um, we received an RFP that was produced by you folks, and within that RFP, there were seven stated concerns that we needed to address. And then we went through a time period of, uh, listening sessions with five of the, of the stakeholder groups within the community. And as we went through those, as we talked about those concerns, other than when the concerns were listed, I put a check mark beside them every time somebody mentioned that concern. And so I could just see the level of those concerns. And, um, as we went through that, we saw three things that stood out quite a bit. So we'll go into those as we go through these concerns. Then we also heard concerns as we did the community design charrette. Um, and then, so we pulled all of those concerns together and tried to address them within this full report, which we will be producing, giving to Daniel electronically tomorrow so that it'll be made available to the public. So, we have to understand that this is a specialized park type. This is unique to the Black Hills, it's unique to South Dakota, it's unique to most of the upper Midwest, other than Michigan, Indiana, Wisconsin. So, um, it is just a, an unusual animal. So, areas of concern, and we've addressed it in depth within our report, but the, the first one that came about was water quality and management of that water quality. And, um, we have quite a dissertation on that within the full report. Some of it's addressed here in this presentation. It's big enough that nobody can read it, so we'll, when you get the full report, you can, you can really read into that and then be able to ask really good questions about it. The next thing was, uh, What's that?
You want to give the next one?
Yeah. Yep. We'll go into that a little bit. So, bird and aquatic life management, and we, uh, have quite a dissertation about how to do that through design, and how you configure the slope to the, to the water, et cetera. Now, one of the things you have to understand in this kind of a park, is the only water that goes into that basin is the water we want to go there by design. So there's no water shedding into the lake from the shore unless we want it to at the beach, is one of the main areas that that would happen. Everything else is flowing away from that waterline because we don't want infiltration of organics, et cetera, that could contaminate this water. The water itself would be whatever rainfall lands on that lake, and through evaporation, et cetera, we have to raise the level. And our intent, God willing, is to use the well that was part of the old swimming pool location, and it's raw water, it's untreated water. We do not want treated water going into this basin. We, we do the treatment through natural organic treatment and movement of water, et cetera, et cetera. And then, of course, the biggest concern was the amount of water that would be used, the supply of water that would be needed. Granted, we're going to have evaporation, that's going to happen. We're going to have low rainfall years, that's going to happen. So what we have to do is we have to look at how we, how we address that, and, uh, what, what kind of water, um, volume would it take to make that work? there were seven stated concerns that we needed to address. And then, we went through a time period of listening sessions with five of the stakeholder groups within the community. And as we went through those, as we talked about those concerns, other than when the concerns were listed, I put a check mark beside them every time somebody mentioned that concern. And so, I could just see the level of those concerns. And as we went through that, we saw three things that stood out quite a bit. So, we'll go into those as we go through these concerns. Then, we also heard concerns as we did the community design charrette. And then, so, we pulled all of those concerns together and tried to address them within this full report, which we will be producing, giving to Daniel electronically tomorrow, so that it'll be made available to the public. So, we have to understand that this is a specialized park type. This is unique to the Black Hills. It's unique to South Dakota. It's unique to most of the Upper Midwest, other than Michigan, Indiana, Wisconsin. So, it is just an unusual animal. So, areas of concern, and we've addressed it in depth within our report. But, the first one that came about was water quality and management of that water quality. And we have quite a dissertation on that within the full report. Some of it's addressed here in this presentation. It's big enough that nobody can read it. So, we'll, when you get the full report, you can really read into that and then be able to ask really good questions about it. The next thing was...
Do you want to give the next one?
Yeah. Yep. We'll go into that a little bit. So, bird and aquatic life management. And we have quite a dissertation about how to do that through design, and how you configure the slope to the water, et cetera. Now, one of the things you have to understand in this kind of a park is the only water that goes into that basin is the water we want to go there by design. So, there's no water shedding into the lake from the shore unless we wanted to at the beach, is one of the main areas that that would happen. Everything else is flowing away from that water line because we don't want infiltration of organics, et cetera, that could contaminate this water. The water itself would be whatever rainfall lands on that lake. And through evaporation, et cetera, we have to raise the level. And our intent, God willing, is to use the well that was part of the old swimming pool location, and it's raw water. It's untreated water. We do not want treated water going into this basin. We do the treatment through natural organic treatment and movement of water, et cetera, et cetera. And then, of course, the biggest concern was the amount of water that would be used, the supply of water that would be needed. Granted, we're going to have evaporation. That's going to happen. We're going to have low rainfall years. That's going to happen. So, what we have to do is we have to look at how we, how we address that. And what kind of water volume would it take to make that work? By the last understanding of the well that we've talked about using, it had the capacity to assist us. We don't know that yet because we'll have to do some investigation of that well to see what condition it's in. So, this just addresses some of those areas of concern. The next thing was leak detection. This is not just a pond. It is a pond with a liner. So, there's a waterproof membrane that runs underneath this. And then, we use different methodologies of river rock and soils, et cetera, to keep that in its place, plus the water pressure. So, there's all kinds of leak detection methodologies that are out there proven. The fact that it is a liner helps us with that. Because if you have a leak, it's going to be in a very focused area. It's not just going to be, you know, saturation of the soil. You can detect it, take the water level down, and repair the problem. Next. So, with every park like this, you have to have a standard operating procedures for the summertime. And within our manual, we talk in depth about that process of hiring, of training, of standards for activities, lightning storms, what do you do? What's the standard procedure? You're constant in contact with the local weather services, et cetera, so you don't get caught by surprise. And then, that's summertime. Wintertime, the same thing. Same thing applies. Your management is in control of that space. And we have to post and do the things that are necessary. We show in some of our concepts the potential of sledding hills related to our water slide, but we don't bring you to the lake. We bring you off to the side in those ideas. And then, there's all kinds of, you know, buffers and such that you can use to control that. So, there's operations and human management on both of those seasons. Then, with the help of Ron, who our company manages several of these facilities, we do have some very good idea of the potential and the possibilities within the business model. And any questions should really go to Ron for this because he's the guy that assembled all of this, and he's got all of that experience. Go ahead. We built three revenue models. And if you look on the left on your screen, I know you can't read it, but if you, if you look on the left, you see this little cadre of numbers. And those are all numbers that are decision points for the city and for the management. Those are numbers that tell you about number of visitations, pricing, all of those things. When you plug those numbers into this model, which Ron has built, it extrapolates possibilities by changing your fee for something by a dollar. It tells you what that means. If you change your visitation by 50 people for the summer, it tells you what that means. So, as you look up there, you see on the, under the model column, you see yellow highlighted areas. Those are all decision points. And we have built three models, conservative, likely, and stretch. Now, just think of those words. Conservative. That's just saying, woe is me. Things are not going to go well. And this is what could happen. Likely is based on a history of small communities this size with facilities like this. It's not a stretch by any, you know, any thought. The stretch is saying, it's going to be wildly successful. What does that mean? It could mean that you have to start limiting the number of people. It could mean that you have to raise your prices to limit the number of people. Those are all things that, again, those are decision points. All of those yellow marked areas that the city can go through, the management can go through, and make determinations. In the conservative model, which Matt is kind of flipping through, you can see there's a lot of background in this. And then, we get to the bottom line. This is one that everybody's interested in. Can't read it, but I'll read the right-hand number of each one for you. They're all positive. In our worst-case scenario, we could build, it's about a $34,000 to $35,000 positive cash flow. This accounts for hiring people. It accounts for repair and maintenance on an annual basis. It accounts for repair of, you know, a blow-up type device, gets a hole in it, or it breaks down. All of those things, those are all included in that number. The likely comes out $164,000 positive. And the stretch, about 238. So, in all of the scenarios that we built, trying to think the worst case, trying to think the most likely case, and trying to say, what could really happen, they're all positive. Excellent. Let's go to the concepts.
Excuse me. Do you have a page point of reference for the super manual we have?
It's, there's like an index or whatever right in front there, Mike.
The models are, they start on 82, 83. So, they're conservative, likely, that's where that starts, the bottom line. I'm sorry.
There's a table of contents. So, some of the things that we're talking about, sort of page 47 and so forth.
Okay. So, we did three concepts as was requested. We thought we knew what the three were until we went through the design, community design charrette. And we realized that we were missing one that we needed to do. So, we did that as concept number one. We call it lake and ball fields. And as you're looking at that, north is off to your right, just to get you oriented. The top of the page in color, that's Ballpark Road. On the far upper left, you see, on the far left, you see kind of an orange area with an L-shaped building in it. That would be the development property left over after we put the park in and did ball field reconstruction. So, you see on the far right, you see a parking lot. That's in the cost. When we, when we get to that, you see three little league-sized fields, and you see one kind of tucked in there down the page from them a little bit. Yeah, Matt's showing it with his, that would be like T-ball, that sort of thing, small field. And then, you see a cloverleaf of four ASA 315-foot fence softball fields. So, that deals with the ball fields. There's also a parking lot related to that. As we get into the cost, as I built these cost models for this, I took some of the elements that might have been in the park that go into the ball fields because the ball fields are causing that cost. For instance, demolition of the grandstand that's there. That's in the ball fields because ball fields are lapped over that area. So, I tried to attribute cost to what was causing the cost. You also see, in this park, you see a very large parking lot. Part of that went into the ball field cost because it's bigger than all of our other parking lots for all of our other concepts because we were trying to assist with getting some of the parking off of Ballpark Road. So, let me, can I do that here? Let me just walk up there. I'm an architect. I have to...
We better give you a microphone, though, Gene.
I'll shout. Can you hear me back there?
We want it for Facebook.
Okay. Oh, we got a microphone. Thank you. So, I'm going to start here on the far-left side. As I mentioned, that was the development area that was left over after we did all of this. This took us all the way to the parking lot at the elementary school. So, we busted out of our given site of 24 acres to do this. This area right down here is the area that was being talked about, given over to the school district. This right in here. There's a couple of small ball fields in this area. So, park entry. Oh, by the way, here's the Public Works Building, the maintenance building. It's right in there. So, we worked around it with our putt-putt golf parking lot, entry to a kiosk-type area, entry point. Then, we've got our playground. We've got splash pad. And we've got the beach coming in. We've got, we're showing here an amphitheater with some green space around it. We've got a pathway all the way around the park. Got a little bridge area here, the slides. There's actual chutes, blow-up chutes, coming down the hill. And then, you see this dash line. That's your sledding hill in the winter, you know, running right by the lake. Whippets out here, the blow-up. This shows a half whippet, a large whippet. Then, there's other components that you can add to that to increase the size of it as time and revenues warrant. A dock with paddle boards and paddle boats, and all of those kinds of things that could operate off of those stand-up paddle boards. This lake is, and all of the lakes we show, will be right around three acres in all of those situations. So, the deeper depths out here where the structures are, and then, different shallowness and depths moving around the space so that the water movement is constant. So, and then, we show scattered around some shelters that could be around the different areas of the park. Go to the next one, Matt. So, that was ball fields. This is called the loop. Kind of explains itself to you. In this case, we did a development area wrapped around the park. We show a couple of potential commercial area nodes on either entry corner, residential nodes around the backside. We show the continuation of bike paths, et cetera, coming through and connecting into the park, and then, going to the ball fields over there. One of the things we showed here, knowing that we're always struggling with that parking issue with the ball fields, is we pushed this development building forward. There's still room for double grow-up parking here, but put parking in the backside so that evening times, it could serve to the ball fields. So, that would just be a conversation that would have to be had with the developer that came to light. So, in this case, we've got kind of a, just a green space, open space here for concerts, any kind of things. Parking lot, you know, entry point, splash pad, playgrounds, then, the rental building and storage building with the putt-putt golf working off of it, the slide hill. Hope I'm not blocking anybody. Boat ramps, whippet. And all of these, we've got some length that we could get, like a smaller wakeboard or that sort of thing in there, in the ventualized zip line, things like that. We're always looking at that to, what could this be built out? We have to design the lake so that it takes care of the maximum that we could possibly do here, and then, work backwards from that. Next one. This is the one we call the split because they're split. And this is what we were given as the north end of the park of the site. And we just accumulated all of the development to one side with one entry, and the park to one side. This is the smallest amount of parking, about 150 stalls in this case. And again, same thing, entry, got a kind of a kiosk point. In this area, this one, we're showing a lot of berming along this buffer line between the park and the development. So, there's, you know, some landscape knolls to kind of just hide that a little bit. And again, that constant walking path, water slides. In this case, we could keep on going down into the ball fields with the sledding hill off of that berm that we've built. Again, the whippet, the boat, ramps, et cetera. So, those are the three concepts. Again, we show the, kind of the bike path playing through. When we get to our costing, we'll see that what we did was we played around a little bit with hard surface and gravel surface quantities. Because we know that, we have to have a start point to where we get this thing started, and then, we can develop further beyond that. You always look at a concept and imagine, boy, that's the final idea for this. Well, these are concepts. They're intended to explore different development potential for the site. And ultimately, based on the final budget for the park space, you'd have a final design that'd be based on that. Would include certain things. Some things might be left for the future. Usually, you see three concepts, and then, the final concept looks a little bit like every one of those. So... Are you ready to talk about numbers? Let's talk numbers. This was three weeks of my time pulling my hair out. All of our numbers, you're looking at a small part of the spreadsheet. Each one of the spreadsheets, the whole thing is about seven pages. There's a lot of detail in behind what you're, what you're looking at here. We summarized it. So, I broke it into three components. The general conditions and infrastructure, the park, and anything related to the ball fields. Every one of them, we've got something related to the ball fields to show you. Whether it be just lighting what we have, you know, adding some parking, or complete reconstruction. So, this is number one. This is the, first thing I want to look at is this line right there. So, if you can blow that up, Matt. There you go. So, what this includes, let's look at the park. It includes a large whippet, two inflatable chute slides, a dock, and the lake. And the lake with the pond liner and all of the controls and, you know, landscaping around it, et cetera, et cetera. Then, recreational is a splash pad, mini golf, 18-hole, and a playground, equipment and surface. And I believe I had that in at $100,000, if I remember right, just off the top of my head. Estimated construction costs. And then, we put in a contingency, always put in a contingency of about 20% at this stage of the game because there's still a lot of design to go. And then, design and construction administration. And that brings us to about, for this component, just for the park component, about 3.8 million, a little over. But if you slide up the page now... Working on that. What's in the general conditions and infrastructure is water and sewer to and from the site. It includes general grading. It includes the general conditions, getting the contractor onto the site, all of those things that hide in that little top part up there that people don't think about. And we thought about it. So, we included that, and that's about $620,000 on this particular element. And then, if you go down to the bottom, we have the ball field. Now, remember, in this situation, we're constructing eight ball fields. Four ASA-sized ball fields, some little league fields, and then, like I said, that like T-ball-sized field. So, there's about... So, there's about, uh, right around $5 million just in ball field construction. So, this one works out to, this, this entire park and ball fields component is right around, it's pushing 14 million. Okay. Next one. The loop. Same thing, but different numbers at the top of this, again, because now, for instance, our water line from that well to the lake is a longer distance, so that number goes up. It's got a little less parking, it's got some more, um, intense grading, so that number comes in around $700,000. The park itself is similar cost to the last one, about 3.9 for the park itself, including all of the soft cost. And that takes us to a total for the park, including the infrastructure and general conditions, about 4.6. And then the ball fields, here, all we're doing is we're lighting, providing lighting on four of the existing fields. And that cost comes out to right around a million dollars, million seventy for that component. Plus, there's a little bit of parking, if I remember right, in this one. Next one, the split, similar numbers again. Squeeze in on up the top, a little higher on this number. And part of that is that we're getting into some interesting slopes, so our grading costs are going up a little bit more. But the, the aquatic component and the recreational component are the same in every one of them. And this one comes out to, what is that number down there? Just about 3.8 million for the park, and then include the infrastructure, et cetera, you're about 4.4.55. And then, again, there's a little bit lower cost on the ball field lighting because there is no parking that's designated for this component. So, that number came down a little bit. So, those are those three concepts, and with opinion of probable cost, um, we're working with today's dollars on those opinion of probable cost. A civil engineer that we were working with, just taking a couple bids, and, and he's your civil engineer with the city right now, so. He was, uh, being very, very careful to make sure that the numbers were legitimate, so. And, uh, Ron, do you have any comment on those?
Ron, do you have any comment on those?
Can you hear me in my mind?
Yep.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, Gene, I think the, um, from the park standpoint.
No, I, I, it's, it's, I think the, um, from the park standpoint, no, I, I, it's, it's, I think the, um.
Ron, if you would mute, mute your computer.
Got it. Figuring that out. I got it. There we go. I think the components for the park itself are all very consistent, um, with the whippet, the lake, the hillside slides, the splash pad playgrounds, those type of things. I think the variables around it, uh, with the different designs, the slopes, the ball fields, are, are really the, 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 a little bit more unknown in these. Uh, feel very comfortable with the park componentry and how those are laid out.
Okay. So, with that, uh, tomorrow, we will submit to Daniel our final report. We, we've seen a couple little glitches that we need to correct, and we'll get those corrected tomorrow morning. Just annotation, so, any questions or?
What the intention would be is that, um, tomorrow, hopefully morning, but tomorrow at some point, their presentation, their PowerPoint presentation, as well as the report, will be posted on our Facebook site, or I'm sorry, on our website, and then we had scheduled on January 10th, Monday, January 10th, at the Community Center Theater, a, um, a joint meeting between the city council and the Outdoor Aquatics Committee, uh, where this can also be discussed in more detail. So, hopefully, that'll allow people several weeks to be able to digest, um, war and peace that our professionals here wrote for everyone.
Maybe just a couple of questions. As far as each of the concept plans, do we have any estimate as far as number of homes or things of that nature that might be at any of those places?
We've kind of guessed at it, if you just count the sites on the, on the concepts. We tried to do, you know, 7,500 square foot lots in there. It could end up being multifamily, could, you know, be townhomes, you know, that make all of that, you know, an exercise, so. Any other questions, Dave?
I, I've got another question, me, probably for Daniel, uh, as far as staffing for this year round, will we have an estimate of how many people would be out there to staff this?
That's included in their business models. Those three business models, I have not gone through it, so I can't tell you what that number is. But yeah, it does have the staffing levels that would be required to maintain the property and to do lifeguarding and.
Right, and they were very specific as far as what type of lifeguards and the whole business, and also, they had some manuals for each task, and I, I really liked that and so forth. But I just want to make sure that we keep thinking about having enough people to manage this as we go on.
Included with that, the costs of utilities and things like that. And so, just that, those ongoing continual costs are included is the point that I want to make.
So, I can, I can speak to staffing or to that business model very quickly. When I created the business model, it was created for the summer season, all right, which is a hundred day, about 98 days in the season, 14 weeks, Memorial Day through Labor Day. So, the staffing, uh, the metrics, uh, the, um, cash flows and expenses and utilization rates are all targeted, uh, towards that 98 days or that 14 week season. It was anticipated that outside of that, uh, 14 week season, it would be, uh, regular, uh, park maintenance staff, you know, lawn mowing, things like that. Uh, but the, uh, the Lakeside Adventure Park portion of it, the whippet and those things would be packed the way they would be put away, and then the park would be used as a, uh, on those shoulder seats, and through the winter, more as a community park, typical, uh, as opposed to a, uh, a park that is a somewhat could potentially be a tourist attraction or something for visitors to come into. So, it's just a 14 week season that the staffing plan is accounted for in, in those models.
In most models too, we have taken, I believe it's week 10, and we've penalized it for the rally. And just, we just took the attendance way down. Don't know if that's going to be a fact, but we thought it best to think that way.
Creative management could make it the most busy week of the summer, but maybe not.
I have another question. I know when this process started, we started this consideration, we used solely the fairgrounds property. I just wanted on the, in the public discussion that if this was to switch locations, the vast majority of these costs would overlap with the aquatics portion and things like that, and that was discussed through this process.
One of the thoughts I had was that if there's an alternate location being talked about, that a raw, raw water well would be, would be part of it, and that's probably around a million bucks, just.
Yep, understood. Other discussion from council, no action tonight, just informative in getting this report out. And as Daniel stated and Gene stated, this will be electronically available on our website sometime tomorrow. Go ahead, Dave.
Sorry, about interrupting there. I've got another question for Daniel. And in the past, when we've had some of these meetings, we've often rolled out like, okay, this is how we're going to pay for it. And so, I would assume when we have the meeting on January 10th, we'd have something along those same lines as far as how we, we would pay for this.
Yeah, so now, the information that's being provided, we'll, uh, start digesting that and look at what the potential revenue is and how it could, uh, potentially be paid for or not be paid for.
All right, thank you.
In specific, Dave, I think you're talking capital costs and initial construction, and the plan's all along been some sort of tiff to couple the development and the park together to make it pay for itself, so.
All right, yeah, I just think that probably it would be good to refresh the memory of the public. I mean, it's, it's been presented, uh, those figures, but I think we need to make sure that on the January 10th meeting, that, that all those figures are out there so that they can see what we're thinking along those lines.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
In the, in the book, in the plan, are there, excuse me, provisions for, for example, aquatic life? So, it tells us how many fish and how many frogs and how many snails and, and that type of stuff because I, I don't know lakes, but I know big stock dams, big stock dams. And if you don't have the right stuff, you're full of moss and everything else, whether it's blattered or not. So, there's a lot more that goes with this as far as wildlife than we're thinking about.
Mike, they've, they've got a bird and aquatic life management strategy.
Any other discussion from council? And again, I don't anticipate January 10th being any kind of action item at that point. Still just a public discussion, further processing the information. Staff will have some time and council will have some time to digest the options presented to us and the book that was given to us here. And again, this will all be on the website starting tomorrow, so.
I would just like to add one comment. I, I, I would really appreciate it if the public has any thoughts about this, pro or con, please contact us and let us know that. And, and contact the, the city council and the mayor and city staff for that matter. And sometimes what happens is, is we have various people will put things, you know, out there on Facebook and so forth, which is fine. But at the same time, we really want to hear directly from the people as much as possible. I think that would be the best way to, to approach this, so we really know face to face what you're thinking about this.
I, I would give kudos to that, but I want to hear, I want to hear from the people that are going to pay for this. And that's, you know, if, if something happens, it's the citizens in the wards that are going to pay for this. So, I want to hear from the people that are going to vote in the future what their thoughts are. This is, this is a big deal.
Any other discussion? Gina, Matt, we thank you, Ron, we thank you for participating here, and, uh.
You're welcome.
We'll do this again on Monday, January 10th. Are you leaving a few of those here too, Gene?
We're just taking our four.
Yep.
Well, do you want the final one? We'll give it to you. As I said, they're going to make a few changes.
We have a couple little.
Thanks, Ron.
Got it. Move them all back, Ron. Thank you very much.
Hell of a job.
Yep, good job, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Brings us to item three under reports. Uh, consideration to purchase two patrol cars off the state bid, and chief's got this staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, up for consideration is authorization and purchase of the following vehicles out of, uh, 2022 budget, using the South Dakota Bureau Personnel Solicitation. 2468s for 2022 model year newer vehicles contracted as awarded by the South Dakota Bureau of Administration. Uh, this is the Dodge Charger all-wheel drive V6 police package four door sedans. Under discussion, utilizing current bid contracts ensures the City of Sturgis is accepting quality, materials, equipment, and supplies at competitive prices. Utilizing, utilization of these contract prices also reduces administrative costs and procurement times associated with the bidding. Because South Dakota Office of Procurement Management has already handled the bid solicitation and evaluation as well as the contract development and management. Local governments are authorized to use these contracts because they're established through a competitive bidding system and therefore meet all the competitive bidding requirements established under SDCL 5-18A-5. We're able to purchase these vehicles with council authorization and forego the advertisement requirements normally associated with the bid, which allows us to take delivery much sooner and get back into the vehicles, get, and get the vehicles prepped and on the road faster to be utilized for the public's gain, as well as saving significant amounts of money. The purchase of this budget line item is $57,365 in the 2022 budget. By utilizing a state bid contract for this purchase, the city bill will have two quality patrol cars added to the fleet's. These two vehicles be required to be prepared work, which would likely exceed what is allocated in 2022 budgets. However, given the current wear on police department's fleet and price point of the sell bid of SUVs and sedans, it's believed that this is more prudent to purchase two sedans and increase reliability of the fleet and to invest slightly more than what was originally anticipated. If additional savings are not identified in 2022, there will likely need to be a minor supplement later in the year of 2022 to make up the difference in the price between the two sedans and one SUV that was budgeted. City staff would recommend city council authorized staff to use state bid contract in order to follow in 2022 vehicles. Class four door sedan, police package Dodge Chargers, all wheel drive V6 with the contract number of 17620, an amount of $55,922 to Wagner Autos and Pier. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does that include outfit, the 55?
I'm sorry, does that include what?
The upfitting, uh, what?
So, no, they're actually, that's just the cars themselves. Those would be an additional cost for some of the, uh, the equipment that will need to be outfitted.
It seems like I remember seeing some of those cost sheets in our package. I didn't think it was absorbing it myself, so.
Definitely tools we need for the chief and his staffs, for sure.
I, I'm glad to see the all-wheel drive capability.
Yeah, we're, our, our goal is an SUV, looking at the prices, plus there's still a major shortage of, uh, computer chips, so they're shutting down purchases. In fact, we're close on, uh, we're looking close on these being shut down as well, but we decided that maybe it's better being for our buck if we can get two for the price of what one would be outfitted. And it's going to be a SUV V, or I'm sorry, it's going to be an all-wheel drive V6 that'll be a little better on gas as well.
Black, like your current one? Did you go with white?
It's going to be white. Yeah, it'll be similar to our current white one we have.
Any other discussion or questions for chief from council?
I would move to approve the purchase in the amount of $55,902, um, the two sedans for the police department.
Got a first.
I'll second that.
We got a first by Beck and a second by Mike, any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes. Opposed, a no. That motion carries unanimously, thanks, chief. Item four is Resolution 2021-52, this is supplemental appropriation, normal procedural stuff at the end of the year to. This is supplemental appropriation, normal procedural stuff at the end of the year to clarify and clean up for the audit, the grants and things like that throughout the year. Mr. Ainsley, I got you for staff report here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We have eighty thousand dollars in the budget for this year for contingencies. So that's actually money that has been set aside directly for various expenses that might come up that were unanticipated for. This action would use forty-seven thousand dollars of that. One is in our finance department, which is the general fund department. The professional fees to do some COVID-related grant auditing that was required increased our audit by nine thousand dollars. But with that, we've received far more grant funds than that nine thousand dollars, but that was still some additional work that needed to be done. Almost all of that was for ambulance COVID-related grants that we received, which was a good thing that enabled us to purchase two new ambulances this year. In the buildings line item, we are looking to transfer an additional eight thousand dollars. That came about when we, there was an unplanned rate increase that was not included when we developed the twenty-twenty-one budget. I think that was something that began in July or August of this year. When you look at all the various buildings in the municipality, that's comes out to about eight thousand dollars of additional expenditures in twenty-twenty-one. That has been included in the twenty-twenty-two budget. In the rally, if you look at our additional, oh, sorry, fleet management, thank you, Fay. In our fleet management, we were able to have a partnership with the state where we were able to hire an intern. The goal is to have that intern become full-time. Once he completes all of his various training, that should be around May or June. That has been included in the twenty-twenty-two budget. That really is important for succession planning as our fleet department mechanics are one of the hardest positions for us to be able to recruit for. So it allows us to ensure that we're able to have a, a robust department that's able to maintain the various vehicles in our city fleet. We were able to begin a program this year with the state that they were able to pay for a large portion of the wages for the intern. We have now heard what the city's portion would be that the city has to pay for, and so that's eight thousand dollars. And that's for this year. In the rally department, we continue to do far more e-marketing or e-commerce sales than what we ever had anticipated. Each time when we do sales, there are some additional charges for credit card fees and shipping. We did not know or anticipate when we adopted the twenty-twenty-one budget that we were going to be launching our own brand and that we were going to have merchandise that we were going to be selling. But we have done that and it's proven successful and we continue to sell more product. Looking today, I think we've had about fifteen orders. And so with that, our credit card fees as well as our shipping continue to increase. But again, there's offsetting revenue to pay for that. At the airport, it's the same there. We continue to be far busier than what we ever have been in the past. And so our airport manager, as well as Dave Smith, who have really been overseeing that, it's a tremendous success story. We have, looking at the weekly report that I sent out on Friday, I think our daily operations at the airport have almost doubled this year. Is it, maybe it wasn't quite a double, but it was a significant increase. What that really has led to is a lot of additional fuel sales. But again, as we sell fuel, we have to purchase additional fuel to make up the difference. And so there's fifteen thousand dollars in the supplemental to pay for the fuel. But again, with that, every time we pay for the fuel, we also sell it. And so there's offsetting revenue that more than meets that extra cost. And then in addition to those contingencies, which all of those contingencies put together is forty-seven thousand, you had budgeted eighty thousand, and so that'd be thirty-three thousand dollars that you would have not have spent compared to what was budgeted. In addition to that, there's a couple of grants that we have. And what the grants mean is we ended up paying for some of these, these costs, but there's offsetting revenue that we've already received. We received some cops grant as well as some grant for additional school officers that came out to just under fifty-four thousand dollars. And also a grant to make upgrades in our police radios of almost eight thousand. And then in addition, we received some additional COVID grant monies for our airport in the sum of thirteen thousand dollars. And so those are additional funds that ended up coming in that we did not anticipate for. We made those expenses, but now we just need to adjust the budget to show that we have appropriate budgeted authority to make those purchases. And then lastly, for insurance, street lighting, we had several light poles that were destroyed unfortunately through accidents. And the entire amount that we received from insurance reimbursement that we've received is fourteen thousand dollars. And then also in the police department, we had some hail damage and also accident damage that we received some reimbursement for from insurance claims. That was nineteen thousand dollars. So that's the total of that supplemental appropriation that we are looking for. Are there any questions?
I just have one comment to make, and I don't know if everybody can read it up there and so forth, but I think it's, it's worth noting with the rally, the, is it online store or whatever the profit was, ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, which is quite substantial.
Any other discussion on, this is a resolution. So if we're doing here, yep, one, one action needed. Public or council, go ahead, Becca.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that this happens every year. It's not a surprise. Our budget is not padded, so to speak. And so I think that when we look overall at the financial health of the city, it's very good. And, you know, as we're heading into the new year, I think that our town has done, and our city staff, we've done a great job in sticking to our budget and meeting our goals. And so thank you very much, Daniel and Fay, for the continued success of our town.
Any other discussion, public or council? Is there a motion on this resolution?
I will move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-five-two, the supplemental appropriation.
I'll second.
First by Beck and a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call this one. I'll start with myself. Um, yes, Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-fifty-two passes. Item five is potential SEDC purchase agreement for the bowling alley building. This is again a point for, I guess, discussion, but no action at this time. But, no action is going to be taken. But I'll turn it over to Amanda from SEDC to give us a report on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amanda Anglin, Executive Director of Sturgis Economic, excuse me, Sturgis Economic Development. For those of you that might not be aware, SEDC is a nonprofit five-oh-one-C six organization that focuses on economic development activities in Sturgis and Mead County. SEDC is the only organization in the county with this full-time focus. SEDC has been in existence since nineteen seventy-three, fostering and assisting numerous economic development projects in and around Sturgis. Each year, SEDC engages in a contract with the city to provide economic development services in Sturgis. Per the contract, the city does compensate SEDC. Depending on the year, SEDC receives only about twenty-five to thirty-five percent of its operating budget from the City of Sturgis. SEDC has diversified revenue sources to ensure our success as an organization. SEDC does own property and buildings in the community, mainly in the industrial park. So a few months ago, I was informed that someone was interested in purchasing the bowling alley to remodel the property into a rally venue that quite possibly would only be open for two weeks a year. At this point, conversations started with various local stakeholders, none of which want to see this large building in the downtown area at a minimum used only two weeks a year or be anything but a bowling alley. SEDC negotiated and signed a purchase agreement to acquire the bowling alley property and the business. SEDC will be the property owner, not the City of Sturgis. We are partnering to make a project successful and keep this business open in our community. Projects like this are not outside of the normal activities of an economic development organization. SEDC was involved in the Domino's Project. Through a private partnership, SEDC was able to purchase the building, tore it down, and rebuilt it. We then assisted the current owners with a loan to purchase the property, and recently they were able to take over full ownership of that property. SEDC started out as a property owner, but the end goal was to sell the property to the current owner, not to maintain ownership. Other economic development organizations across the state have invested in all types of projects that are important to their communities. Projects such as purchasing the local newspaper that abruptly closed after a hundred and forty years in operation. The Economic Development Organization got to work quickly, purchasing the business and building, and getting it started up again with an operator that hopes to purchase it in the future. Another community purchased their nursing home to save it from closing and displacing residents. They also recently sold the property and business to an operator. Another purchased a bar to present the, prevent the building from becoming a storage facility on their main street. This community is actively seeking a new owner. So if there's anyone interested in operating a bar in eastern South Dakota, I'd be happy to connect you. An economic development organization in North Dakota purchased their bowling alley that has been closed for a number of years. Currently, they're renovating the building and they plan to open it in January. All of these organizations, including SEDC, have the end goal in mind to, to help an entrepreneur start or take over the, the business. There are not any long-term plans to own or operate these businesses, just as SEDC does not have a long-term plan to own this property. We want to help provide an opportunity for a small business to succeed and grow in our community. During my research for this presentation, a colleague of mine from a small rural community on the other side of the state sent me this quote, and she said, "This type of project is such an example of what economic development and community development is for our South Dakota communities." In two thousand and fourteen, the City of Sturgis invested in an economic development revolving loan fund. This revolving loan fund was started to assist in the growth of the community's retail sales tax base. Since the start of this fund, there have been about twelve loans issued for a total of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and all of those businesses are still in operation today, and that loan fund keeps revolving and there are funds available where we can continue to help other businesses. Normally, a business would apply to SEDC for use of the city's economic development loan funds. But for this project, SEDC is partnering with the city to utilize some of these funds. Again, SEDC will be the property owner, not the City of Sturgis. We are partnering to make this project successful and keep this business open in our community. The bowling alley was built in nineteen fifty-six and has been in operation for sixty-five years as a bowling alley. And I was told earlier today, details might be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told earlier today that about twenty years ago, somebody purchased the bowling alley for the sole purpose of using it as a bar during the rally. When the city and community members found out about this, that it wasn't going to reopen as a bowling alley, they rallied around it, found a manager, and got it back open again. So it was only closed for a short amount of time. Currently, the business is open seven days a week and has seven part-time employees, not including the owners who invest a lot of their own time into this business. There are seven adult bowling leagues and three youth leagues that run six days a week. The adult leagues have two hundred and sixteen participants, and the youth leagues have forty-eight kids participating. Recently, the lead elementary school came for a field trip with roughly a hundred and sixty to two hundred kids. The middle school will be using the facility on two different days with approximately a hundred-plus kids. Many local area businesses use the facility for Christmas parties, and families use the facility for birthday parties. Jump in on there on a Saturday, try and get a lane, there's usually a handful of birthday parties going on in there. There are many more opportunities to bring people to Sturgis and the bowling alley for tournaments, which would mean hotel nights, dining, and shopping in Sturgis. A closure, a closure of this facility would impact two hundred and sixty-four regular users of the bowling alley, including forty-eight kids and numerous other community members. The investment put into saving this property and allowing it to continue as a bowling alley far outweighs the cost to construct a new facility and also preserves a long-time business in downtown Sturgis. So thank you for taking the time to listen, and we truly appreciate your support of economic development and your partnership on this project. Partnering with the city on this project will allow SEDC to continue with other economic development projects and initiatives that we already have in the pipeline. Projects such as a multi, such as multi-unit buildings in the industrial park to accommodate the growing needs for the trades industry and numerous small businesses looking for a location. And also the Dolan Creek Senior Living Facility that will accommodate fifty-plus seniors in our community. So again, thank you for your partnership in this project, and we look forward to many more partnerships to further the economic growth of our community. There was also a petition that was laid on the desk at the bowling alley. And on this informal petition, there are a hundred and sixty signatures. It was there for sixteen days, all in support of keeping the bowling alley a bowling alley. Eighty, let's see, fifty-three percent of the signers were from Sturgis. There were some from Whitewood, Spearfish, Vale, Rapid, and eleven other cities throughout the area. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda from council?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Okay. Well, I, I just want to say that I am the council member that sits on the board of SEDC, and I am speaking in support of this opportunity. I think it could be said that the city, we already support recreational opportunities. And the City of Sturgis, we support not only economic development, but economic retainment. I think it's important that we emphasize that. And while I and, and we support rally businesses and owners, the bowling alley has been an anchor of our downtown area for decades. And it is important to see that it is maintained as that anchor. This issue, for me, is a quality of life issue, and it's a recreation issue, both of which I believe are topics that we could have a discussion about in our community. I think coming into next year, there, there, there are important things that we can discuss. So finally, in, in closing, I just want to say that there were many eyes of business experts and owners on this agreement. So it wasn't just, you know, something that has been haphazardly put together. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thanks, Becca. Any other discussion? Questions for Amanda? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead. What do you have, Deb?
Deb Holland with the Black Hills Pioneer. And hate to bring up things that are out there on Facebook, but I'm going to. There was some discussion about who this building is being purchased from, and the realtor in this case is a city employee. How do you, how do you respond to that? And is there a conflict of interest?
The representation.
Rochelle.
Yeah, for, for the sale of the property.
Correct. And I mean, she had it listed before she became an employee, but still.
Sequentially, yes, it's.
But still, is there arm-length transaction? What's going on here?
Go ahead, Daniel. You're reaching for the microphone.
The, the discussions about potentially purchasing this, purchasing the property from, or by SEDC from the family that owns it was started before Rochelle was a city employee. And it started because there was significant. city employee, and it started because there was significant, uh, interest that was being shown by rally interests, and so that's when that began, which was long before, uh, she was a city employee. And the negotiated purchase price, I believe, is less than what the, um, advertised sales price is of the property. Amanda's shaking her head, so yes, it is. So it's not that there's a premium that's being, um, paid for this. And also, if you look at other, uh, properties downtown that are of similar size that have recently sold, including, uh, Mr. Owl's, uh, the pi, the price of this property is almost half of what it was at Mr. Owl's. So I think it would be very challenging to, uh, say that it's actually being, um, paid at a premium, given that it's less than comparables, and it's also less than the listed price.
But the question is, is there a conflict with a current city employee being a part of this deal?
That city employee were part of the negotiations, which, uh, the city employee was not, and then, um, and if her department was actually the department that was a part of it, that there would be. At this point, it is not, and the city's actually not a, and a party of the transaction. It's SEDC. That's a party of the transaction.
What, aren't you buying it first and then doing the transfer?
No.
Okay.
It's being purchased by SEDC.
Okay, so.
The city is providing some financing to SEDC.
Okay.
Which also it did for several different projects, including, um, Domino's, as well as, uh, the Exit 32 properties, or Scoop Town Car Washes, and other properties throughout town.
Okay, so it's not a buy surplus?
Correct.
Like you have done in, okay.
No. The city is not going to own title on this property at all.
All right.
And I'm just going to say that myself, my opinion is that I concur with Daniel. I do not see a conflict of interest or any kind of hint of corruption or anything of that order. And my second comment is, I'm sorry, it's Facebook.
Okay.
It is nothing, you know, I mean, while I will, I think it's important that we address citizens' concerns. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. Mark?
Answer your question, Deb. Do you feel comfortable with?
Yes, thank you.
All right, you bet.
Thank you.
Any last discussion on SEDC's purchase of the bowling alley?
Mr. Mayor, if I can bring up another point, which also is why, you know, given that there were some questions that were raised on Facebook, why this was even brought forward, um, to the council. If you look at previous times when this was done, it would be done by SEDC, and the city would provide financing. There was not this amount of community discussion beforehand, um, during the process or anything else. This is the first time we have done it, and we are doing it so that the residents of the community know, you know, what the process is, what the thought process was behind it, and, um, why we are actually proceeding with this action to make sure that the community can continue to have a bowling alley and it doesn't become another T-shirt Emporium.
And as I mentioned, the, the city helping SEDC financially with this transaction will allow us to continue with the current projects we have in our pipeline, because our, our bank account isn't flush, we don't have a lot of money sitting around to do projects. We have to get creative with our financing, and we still want to be able to help the senior living project with the commitments we've already made. We still want to move forward with building buildings in the industrial park, and those buildings are going to be very expensive, and so this partnership is going to help us continue to do all of these things.
Appreciate that clarity. Sure.
I've had multiple contacts, uh, from the public on this myself, uh, all very positive for the retaining of the operational status of the bowling alley.
Appreciate it, Mike. Yep.
Isn't that something that I should divulge in a, I mean, it's not, um.
Below the list.
We have a negotiated price with the purchase.
Yep.
Yeah, when, when the, when the deal is done, that information will be public.
Item six under reports is a consideration of first reading of redistricting. This is ordinance 2021 dash 12. This is something that, with the census information given us, to us from the federal government, the city has to try to balance out the wards and, uh, make the population correct and have sensible boundaries and things like that. So, I have Mr. Ainsley for a staff report, and I'll turn it over to you, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I think to highlight what the mayor stated, this is actually a constitutional requirement. It's not, um, something that the city is choosing to do, um, or trying to redraw ward boundaries based off of a whim or anything else. It's something that's required by the U.S. Constitution. It's required by the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as well as the state constitution in Article 3, Section 5, and also the city ordinance. Um, in doing that, when you look at the, uh, current boundaries of the current wards, uh, given the results of the census, there's an imbalance between the current wards. There cannot be a deviation, um, between the largest ward and the smallest ward, population size, not geographic, but the population size of the largest ward and the smallest ward, there cannot be a deviation of more than 10% between the two. Um, when you look at the current ward, um, uh, the current wards, they exceed, uh, that deviation total. Uh, Ward 4, um, is now, or, under the current boundaries, Ward 4, um, is 29.4% larger than what the MEED or MEAN would be, and Ward 1, which is the smallest ward by population, is, uh, 7.02%. Uh, so when you combine the two, it ends up becoming 36.42%, which greatly exceeds a 10% uh, rule that has been established by the Department of Justice. So that's why you're being asked to, uh, come up with the new ward boundaries. And coming up with the ward boundaries, um, it is the goal to make them as logical as possible. Um, and in doing so, uh, our GIS coordinator looked at natural boundaries, uh, and in doing those, tried to come up with what it would be the most logical boundary to come up with four wards that would be very similar in size. Um, in doing so, she, uh, provided several different scenarios. Uh, the one scenario that was recommended is, uh, scenario six. In scenario six, you can see, uh, the deviation between, uh, Ward 4, which would be the largest ward, and Ward 3, which would be the smallest ward, uh, the deviation is 8.87%, so it's within, or less than, the, uh, 10% maximum. Uh, this almost perfectly, uh, contours with logical boundaries, uh, using Sherman Street as the northern boundary between Wards 2 and 3, and then Wards 1, and so Ward 1 ends up becoming pretty much all of Sturgis north of Sherman Street. Um, and then Wards 2 and 3 are separated by Junction Avenue, and Ward 4, uh, ends up being south of I-90. Uh, the one area which admittedly is not exactly perfect is the southern area between Wards 3 and 4. Um, unfortunately, Ward 3 kind of bleeds into some of, uh, where Ward 4 should be located. Um, but again, that's, uh, something that's really required in order to balance out the population. So we tried to make that area as small as possible so that, um, logically, the community is, is drawn as best as possible. Are there any questions?
Any comments, questions, concerns from the public on first reading of redistricting? Counsel, have any input at this point? It's been a process as we win, for sure.
No, just thank you to the city staff and Daniel for all of their time and effort put into this, um, map.
Anything else, public or council? Is there a motion on this first reading?
Motion to approve. Version 6.
Got a first by Dean to approve version 6.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Aaron. Last call for discussion. This is an ordinance, so we'll go ahead and roll call. I'll start with myself again. Um, yes, Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
First reading passes at 2021 dash 12. Item 7 is consideration of three-mile area policy agreement. Mr. Smith has our staff report.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just interrupt, I did, uh, receive a text from.
I saw that too, so go ahead.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, we'll just, we'll add it on after Dave, and shit, we're gonna try to call on Kevin here, um, so he can be a part of this. He had some input and some difficulties getting here today, so, Mr. Smith, back to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. This is usually the spot in the agenda reserved for Public Works, Rick Bush, but I got this one tonight.
There's a change.
I have, uh, we're discussing the three-mile agreement now.
Dave's just giving the staff report, so. Go ahead, Dave.
All right. Um, this is the updated three-mile agreement that, uh, we.
Thanks.
We normally reevaluate every five years. It came due in 2019, but due to unforeseen issues with the world, we put it off for a while. So, um, some of the background information on this, the state of South Dakota authorizes municipalities and counties to enter into cooperative agreements to promote orderly growth and development in areas that surround the municipalities. Uh, these agreements may determine which standards and which, and which entities review construction and development in the areas immediately surrounding the municipalities. Given this, uh, given this authority by the state, the city in Stur, uh, Sturgis and Mead County operate under a three-mile policy agreement for approving plat applications. The agreement defines zones and determines which entity accepts and reviews plat applications with the understanding that the other party will receive the opportunity to review and comment. The agreement also determines those policies which implemented based on where the property is located every five years, and the agreement that accompany, is on the accompanying map that you have in your packet, is reviewed and updated as needed. The current agreement has expired. Officials from Mead County and the city of Sturgis worked diligently to go back and forth to prepare this new agreement and bring it together so it works well for everyone. Um, this agreement was approved by the Mead County Commission at their December 14th meeting. Just little discussion information, uh, since the last agreement that we approved in 2014, the core purpose of the agreement has not changed. However, several additions have been included in the new agreement. To start, the agreement is broken down into three main regions. The regions are general areas where annexation into city is probable, so development standards are determined based on which area the properties are located. Area number one, this region allows the city to accept and approve plat applications with their application being forwarded to the city for their rev, to the county for their review. City development policies are used to regulate development in this region. A notable addition, since the last agreement, is that the city will issue building permits for new commercial construction projects or new residential developments that involve five or more parcels. Mead County will continue to manage the building permits that do not fit this criteria. And area number one is, is one mile around our current city limits. Area 2, this region will be governed by Mead County ordinances with the opportunity for city to review and provide comment. County policies will be used to regulate the development. There are no major changes to this section since the previous agreement. A new addition to the agreement is inclusion of area 3. This is a one and a quarter mile area around the city of Sturgis Municipal Airport that has been defined in order to regulate development to ensure that federal, federal aviation administration rules and regulations are followed, such as building height restrictions were applied and when considering plat applications for new development. Nearly identical in the policy management area 2, county policies will be used to regulate development with the city review and, uh, comment. And I will say that, uh, several comments on Facebook, since it's been brought up, we are not going to be annexing the homes around the airport. That's, I got calls, just so everybody knows, it's on record, that that, I don't think is the city's intent at this point in time. Finally, the last change to the agreement is a revised map to identify the regions described above. The agreement is collaborative effort between Mead County and city of Sturgis officials. It has been approved by the Mead County Commission. It's staff's recommendation, recommendation that the city council approve the agreement and the map as it's presented. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Dave from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go, yep, go ahead, Kevin. You want to turn the microphone closer to him?
Dave, as this, uh, this agreement affects building code, uh, set by ordinance, how is a marijuana dispensary affected by, uh, this current agreement? Because there are building-related items within our marijuana ordinance.
Well, Kevin, I don't have an answer for that.
My answer would be.
I feel that, uh, that could potentially be, you know, affecting capitalism and decisions made by our county commission, and, uh, feel at the very least that, uh, the marijuana ordinance portion needs to be stricken and identified as not pertaining to this three-mile agreement.
I, I think some points of where, where it goes off different directions, Kevin, is that requirement for the sprinklers and all that zoning, or excuse me, the zoning and the, in the building requirements is specific to our ordinance, so without that being specific to the county ordinance, I don't think there would have any effect on that being issued for the, within the radius of the buffer zone there. Does that make sense what I'm saying, Dave?
Well, I, and I, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm reading what you're asking me, is you're talking about the one-mile jurisdiction where this agreement that was approved by the county, um, you're saying that where we do building permits for construction, if it was to be a dispensary or a grow or, or operation or something, that you're saying that we should not enforce the marijuana ordinance to that, the construction, correct?
That's correct. I don't feel that that city ordinance should extend outside the physical city limits, and my read of the, as, of the agreement as written, has me feeling that it actually could.
And I, I believe as the mayor described, a city license requires you to follow the building code in addition to having a safe security cameras and, um, fire sprinklers. It is not a building code requirement to have those upgrades, and so as such, we would be enforcing building code requirements in the county areas. As that would be a county license, the city requirements for a city license would not be enforced in the county areas. It would be the same as if, for some reason, the city added additional parameters for a malt beverage license, which we're not, but if the city were to, that would only be enforced within the city limits, not in the county.
But there would be an enforcement of the fire sprinkler system in a commercial building if by the building code it went over the square footage requirement?
If it, correct. If it's required by the building code to have a sprinkler system or something else, that would be required, um, just like it would be required if it's just in the county and enforced by the county. Um, but that would be a building code requirement. That is not going to be a requirement that's going to be enforced because of the city's marijuana ordinance.
Does Mark Marshall concur?
Quite frankly, I haven't had an opportunity to address this issue since tonight was the first time I heard of it. So absent sufficient time to give it due consideration, I'm not going to express an opinion.
I would motion that we table this until our attorney can, uh, provide further information on it.
So we got a first by Kevin to table the agreement, consideration to sign the agreement.
I'll second.
We have a second by Aaron. With the table motion, no further discussion.
With the table motion, no further discussion. All those in favor of the action, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
By a motion of seven to one, that action is tabled until further until further research can be complete, so.
Thank you.
Thanks Dave. That brings us, thanks Kevin. That brings us to item 13, other matters that come before the council. A brief moment in time when council and public have an opportunity to bring things forward. Not on the agenda, no action is anticipated. I guess at this point in time, it'd be pertinent to state that there was a petition received by the finance office and currently we are processing that petition.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. And I guess that needs to be stated for the record. Other matters before the council from council tonight?
Well, I think as we head into the last couple of weeks of the holiday season and the year, I just want to give a shout out and a lot of appreciation to our chamber and SEDC and the city staff who for the last month, two months, have put together such wonderful holiday events. The marketplace is wonderful, Small Business Saturday, Scrooge Night, I mean, the list goes on and on. And I think that the work that they have done just highlights what a great community our town is, how much there is to do and just really, they've been so supportive of local businesses and the residents of Sturgis. So thank you so much to everyone for that.
Thanks Becca. Anything else from council for other matters? How about anybody in the public? Other matters before council?
Would you please come up to the microphone?
Good evening. Brenda Vossnitz. And in regards to the petition that was submitted, when can the Sturgis citizens expect the council to take action on that?
The current processing is occurring. I think it's our hopes and I think it's very attainable is to complete that processing before the end of this week, being a short week. And we'll have to have a special meeting once that next step is needed to be taken. So, in the very near future, I don't want to.
I just wasn't sure if there was statute, that there was a time limit on that, Mr. City Attorney?
The city will address it within the statutory timeframe.
And what would that be?
Within the timeframe.
Just the timeframe? Just general time? It's not like a?
Days of the date of submission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yep. Other matters before the council from the public? Come on up, please.
I just wanted to get some clarification real quick from Dave on the one-mile agreement. I think I understand it, but how would that affect like, say, the gypsies for example? If we're not subdividing anything, would we be exempt from that or how would that work?
I think it's been tabled, so. Yeah, I think that, yeah, the discussions that, once the action to table it, we kind of freeze. I'm sure Dave would be glad to visit with that. The county did approve the written contract, has been brought forward. There might be some consideration to bring back to them to for some clarity. Yeah, I think that as we move forward with the process as we considered, we can answer that definitively when the time comes, for sure.
Okay. So what you're saying, the reason there wasn't any public discussion on it is because we don't know yet?
Once the motion to table was made, then there's no more discussion, so.
Okay. All right guys. Thanks.
Yep. Any other matters before council? I do know that there is a requirement to continue with executive sessions, so is there a motion to do so? Got a first by Dave?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor of executive session, please indicate by stating yes. Opposed, no? We're off to exec. It's 8:45 right now. We'll start at 8:50.